I'm the City Council in Asheville. Do call Royal.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Guthrie.
Tardy.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer is excused. Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. All rise for the vice chair, please.
The flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First item tonight, as usual, is the consent calendar consisting of the minutes from the council meeting of July 7th and the work session from that same evening. And if I could have a motion to approve those.
And before you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right.
Before you missing.
There is at your place a correction on Darren's report on senior advisory board. Phyllis says she mangled it. So, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I moved that we approved them as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will adopt those two sets of minutes. Short mayor's report tonight. One of the committees I've served on at ODOT is the Transportation Enhancement Advisory Committee. For two years ago, Congress redid highway funding with something called MAP 21 and pretty much did away with transportation enhancement. That said, there's been a pot of discretionary money and, you know, people can apply for emergency funding for, to finish up the last little bit of funding they need for projects. Some, few projects have gotten canceled, a few projects have come in under budget. So, there seems to be this continuous little final stream of money that needs to be distributed to projects. And we have another meeting to take care of that. So, I think that particular involvement on my part is probably coming to an end. I had the pleasure of attending the president's club dinner at the golf course. This is donors to Western Oregon University Scholarship Funds. And we had the new president in attendance that night, his sort of first official function. I had to leave early because we had 2,000 cyclists in Main Street Park. So, I hurried back and had the opportunity to speak to Cycle Oregon that night and welcome them to our fair city. Our fair cities, I made a point of including, you know, that this really, this wider community welcomes them when they come. We had a visit from Sean Irvine to speak to them as well Saturday night. And Marshall had a chance to fill them in on what's up at Western. So, they were, they were well welcomed to the community. I had the opportunity to sit down with Mayor McArdle, just for sort of a what's up in your city, this is what's up in mine kind of chat. Nice chance to visit, it's something that we haven't done for far too long, so good opportunity to catch up. I do have Oregon Mayors Association coming up, not this coming weekend, but next. And I'm sure I'll see John there along with lots of other mayors, so that's always a good event for me. We had a Winnipeg Board meeting, and the single biggest item there was moving toward today where we had an opportunity to interview two candidates for the coordinator position. We have another interview due tomorrow. And we hope to have a new person on board as the Winnipeg Access Coordinator soon. And that's kind of been it for the last two weeks. You all received from Phyllis James Mannion's application for the Historic Commission.
Yes.
Had a nice chat with him on the phone. He's like me, he likes old buildings. So, it seemed like a perfect match for the Historic Commission. That was his number one choice of four. So, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve Mr. Mannion to Historic Commission.
Sure. Second.
Moved and seconded. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And with that, I will turn to reports from council reps, the boards, and commissions, and ask Council Requestor Guthrie to tell us what's up with the library board.
So, although I was in Iowa and absent from the last library board meeting, I think it's important to note that they are shutting down their seed library for the season. And I think that what's interesting about that is just the expansion of what a library can be. The idea that we're getting beyond books and a few periodicals and maybe some video content. And it really is becoming more of a knowledge exchange on a wide variety of topics, including gardening. And we know that we live in sort of a really agriculturally vibrant area. It's important that the library represents that and that they're doing a fantastic job. So, although they're shutting it down for the season, they're planning on evaluating the successes and areas for improvement. And they will be reopening it in the traditional spring planting time of next year, potentially with a few changes to make everything even better. There won't be a board meeting for August. Instead, there'll be a recognition for the ceremony for the library volunteers and staff, et cetera. And so, we'll have more details about that coming up.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
We did not have any historic meeting or planning commission meeting.
Well, you see, huh? Counselor Carey, tree advisory.
Tree advisory has not met formally. We had the joint meeting with Parks and Rec in June, and then, then there was a bit of a tree staking deal that happened earlier in July, but, but nothing since, sort of on hiatus. And I'm guessing we'll get back in August preparing for the fall planting. So, that's it for tree.
Okay. Counselor Schaefer's not here for Parks and Rec. Any community announcements tonight?
Yes, I would like to really say thank you very much, Phyllis. We got a high, I got a very high recommendation from Cycle Oregon, and I just wanted to let you know with your help of getting the park and closing the streets. And the people were really responsive to the city of Monmouth. I spent about two hours walking through Sunday morning, talking to people that were here from the area and some of the managers of the program. So, they really put your name right out there. Thank you very much for your help, Phyllis.
Yeah, fantastic event. I hope we talked a little bit during some other business and work session about it. And I know we're trying to get something a little more formal, but it's just incredible to have an event like that made possible via the efforts of city staff. And I know that the Cycle Oregon has their own staff, which does a lot of work, but a little extra effort on behalf of the city really goes a long way in ensuring that we're going to see them again, hopefully very, very soon.
It was nice when I got up to do my piece to be able to say, "Have you ever been to Monmouth for a weekend ride before?" "I mean, you've been here twice." "I've been here three times." So, you know, they do, they do seem to like us, and it's really nice to have them back again. Any other announcements? And hearing that, I will turn to the city manager for your board.
Okay. Thank you. Just one before we get into the quarter report. We haven't had any subdivision activity for a while. One may hint at that, we have no land available for subdivisions. Now, that's usually a predating point you have to have, but we do have actually one of 12 units starting up out on Church Street, west of the two churches. And we have a pre-construction meeting and had a couple of little details to get done, but that'll open up pretty soon. It's understanding actually one builder will do all the houses in there. So, I've got that going. Then, otherwise, you can refer to your goal sheet.
Scott, on the very first one on this, on the street funding issue.
I just saw that.
Consultant B.
Yeah.
What was that description there, the status?
Consultants B. It's just a statement.
Okay, consultant B.
Yeah. I said being engaged to help build their utility, but I sliced it off there, so.
All righty.
So, the main thing there is we had our recommendation on additional street funding.
That was my guess, yeah.
And then, we're, we're getting somebody lined up, and then probably later in the year, we'll have a product for you, and then start working through the public process on that. The transportation SDC update was done. You're visioning alternatives. You said, "Yes, go forward the project." So, that part was complete. The community engagement project is nearing completion. We're kind of closing out the second part of the survey, which is prioritizing some of the main goals. We're going to narrow that down. We're actually going to do the kind of presentation meeting. We'll have a zippy or title, but on August 11th, that'll be a Tuesday. That seemed to work for pretty much everybody. We got rooms available, so we'll get that narrowed in. And that'll be fun. The point of that meeting is to kind of more of a celebration, present to the community, get comments, get ideas, see if you can get people, you know, razzed up to, you know, jump in on something, get on a committee, get somebody excited. So, that would do a more open format rather than just, and then later, I think, I think in their case, it didn't work for the next meeting, probably September 1st, you guys have formally adopted the plan and findings. Then the senior center, we're in good shape on that. I kind of got it at 75. We're just waiting for, you know, the final couple pieces to fall into place. And it was noted that we had a couple of agencies actually asked if we had a little bit extra money, what could we do with it? And there's some little nudges and adjustments they could do. One could take care of just, you know, minor adjustments in the project over time. They talked about some kitchen improvements. Way back, there's a concept of having the building bump out and then having a kind of like a patio little area in there, a little place where people could go out and do some functions that are kind of relaxation outside. So, we'll definitely be able to utilize the money if you'd like to give us more. That's never a problem for any of these, though.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the city hall, that's kind of more kind of popped in and next year, we haven't done too much on that. The Warren Street project, I don't know, we terminated work on that when the ownership changed. And obviously, police station, they're in the police station.
Okay.
So, that's the main thing, and I just notice, I always do, there's lots of stuff going on in the departments. If you have any question about anything there, let me know.
Scott, what's your interpretation on the senior center, when it says construction of senior center and expansion project? At 75%, we don't quite have all the money in place. This can't include the actual physical construction of.
No, I think it was, it was getting the money side. I was really going to target the money. We probably should've said, you know, more like on the funding side, or push the timing out to next year.
So, we might know within a month about that funding, and then we're closing in on the end of the community engagement project, and you're going to be almost out of things to do.
Something will occupy my time.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying is, is there any need for us to get back together before January to just look over things and see if there's anything else to kind of put a finger on and say, "Let's push a little harder on this."
I feel like the vision process is going to provide that, though, John doesn't.
Okay.
It could. We can, we can see, yeah. I'm always one, I'm, I'm not going to hang out in my office, but it also depends on who you're dragging into the process. If you come up with a great new idea for public works, I'll go, "Whoa." And a couple departments will be that kind of shape. But yeah, it's something that, some things are winding down, like something I can allocate time before on something, and absolutely. It's always that issue of what can you do? Do we have resources to do something?
Okay. And Marshall, point taken, but that might be exactly the timing that I'm thinking of is when the thing's done, to sit down and look and see if.
Yeah. We can schedule something on the calendar, obviously. I just, I feel like it'd be appropriate to give that feedback.
Good.
Yeah. So, maybe, yeah, maybe kind of later in the year. Maybe you guys wanted to meet on December 24th.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then, I do have a question about, you mentioned lack of buildable land. What's the next step in finding more buildable land, and what's the timeline for making that happen?
This is Oregon, so it's not easy.
Okay.
So, what you have to do is you have to do, and we are in the process right now of doing a complete inventory of frankly, every property in the city. We have to figure out how they're allocated, what type of zoning, what things we need in the future. You compile that, then you say, "Hey, we're short," then you have to make the case to the state to actually do an urban growth boundary expansion. Once we do that, then it'd be looking for willing owners that wanted to annex their property and move forward. We think that's a good year out plus. It's very extensive.
So, you'd be here, it'd be, well, it would be a hobby, maybe two.
Yeah.
Depends on how it goes.
When you try to do. Yeah, that's, that's like if, you know, we can get all the base work done and get it to the state, they can look at it if there's anything.
But urban growth into a farming district is.
If you woodburn it, it could be 10 years from now.
It would burn, Caesars, the same way they've had.
Yeah, and there's, there's been some other cities have been more circumspect in how they try to grow, which they've gone through, and they've been said, they said, "No, we're just kind of tight. We just want to bump out here." Okay, if you do something pretty wholesale, you're going to get chewed on.
So, you can educate me more offline. It just seems to me that we're, we're not stagnant, we're not shrinking, we're a city that's growing, and that seems to be an, I think, concern.
Oh, it is. Yeah, we've, it's been on our radar for a while.
Okay.
And it's just, it's really tough in other places.
Independence.
You just, other states, you just put out the welcome sign, say, "We need to grow." People on adjacent properties would sell their land, boom, you'd have, and you start building.
Okay. And we've asked, you know, Mark has been working on a buildable lands inventory, and we have a fair amount of single-family land available. Unfortunately, it's available as single lots around town. He looked at some additional, and Scott, correct me if I get this wrong, but multifamily heading out west from campus, because our proportion of multi to single family says we're actually short on multifamily more than we are on single family at this point, because we do have, as a college town, a fair degree of multifamily housing.
Pretty heavy on multifamily.
Yeah.
And the other level I mentioned there with, is willing owners. We've got some, we've got some issues there, too.
Oh, yeah.
We have entire sections going north that are, that are locked up in land.
Conservation.
So, we've got significant property areas to the west that have absolutely zero interest in developing, more of a, "I'll let my kids figure it out." We've got some pockets to the south that are locked up. We're, it's going to be a challenge. We can't go very far to the east, because it's kind of independence.
I think Independence, same way, they're pretty much.
They're squirting out south.
Yeah, and where, where Independence was in a different mode, which I think Dallas was the same way. They had a lot of land sitting there, and then even some in process when the recession hit, so they just went dormant. And then now, you just take it off the shelf, finish it up, and then start building. And we were basically the point where it hadn't got to the demand point where people needed to open up new areas. And then we stopped, and so now we came out of the recession with very little land.
And we do have the parcel in the north of town, which is in uneasement. We had it last time the city did an urban growth adjustment. It was declared single family, even though the owners said that's a bad idea. And so, here we have credit for this big chunk of land that will never be developed. And so, and I don't know where that.
Yeah, not this one we're going to have to work with.
Yeah, DLCD.
Yeah, because, because, yeah, because in their case, they say, "You have plenty of land available." You know, like, "No, we don't." And so, there's got to be some way to recognize that this property owner has said, "No, we've got documentations, they've got all sorts of."
So, to be continued.
To be continued.
I want to make sure that we have the opportunity for both.
Oh, absolutely, that's.
Very good.
And into the south, we're locked up pretty tight, too.
Yeah, and it's got some issues, so we got that. So, there's the basics.
The light, either the farmers will.
Okay, so, anything else, or is?
No.
Okay. Any citizens comment? Seeing none, we will continue along to the business agenda, and the first item is to improve, approve the loan for Power and Light Fund for the amphitheater. And, and here's your guy, what do you got?
Yep. So, we, the council formally, actually, the council and the Urban Renewal Agency formally approved the project to build the amphitheater in Main Street Park. One of the components of that was funding was actually a loan from the Power and Light Fund, which is Citi, to the Urban Renewal Agency. So, this is one half of the equation on the loan. And so, what this is, is the overall project is $1,222,000. 800,000 is coming from Urban Renewal, 300,000 from cash, and then 500,000 would be a loan. The remaining monies are coming from the Park SDC. And so, the reason we did this was we can actually, going through ourselves essentially, our partner organization, you might call it, we can get a lower interest rate than the market. The Power and Light Fund actually makes more money than it would on the market, so it's beneficial for everybody involved. We set the loan at $500,000. You have 2.5%, 2.54% interest, ten-year term, that was the option selected, monthly payments. And that's all set up with the amortization tables. It's very clean, going from one to the other, all shows up very well definable for anybody working at the auditors and everyone else. So, what we need from your side is to actually approve the attached resolution that takes care of the city side of the intergovernmental loan.
And I'd just like to point out, we did have a comment recently about the loans from Power and Light. We certainly have plenty of loan capacity that we could have gone and borrowed this money from a bank. And the bank would have been perfectly fine with loaning us that money at, what, twice the interest rate?
Probably. I mean, probably four to five, somewhere near.
So, having the ability to borrow from ourselves is a real nice thing from the taxpayer point of view, because it does allow us to do some things while saving some taxpayer revenue. And I just appreciate that, that being able to do this. And I think, Darren, you're the one who suggested this approach to this particular product. Now, I just say thanks for making that up. Anybody else have anything on this? This would be Resolution 1803.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of Resolution 1803 authorizing the agreement for a loan to the Urban Renewal Agency.
And would there be a second on that?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Let us make that long. Next item is the, it was pointed out to me a while back by Counselor Morton from Independence that they were in the process of refinancing the loans that they took for the construction of Minnet, which was in the end result in lower payments from Minnet. And I wondered if we wouldn't like to do the same thing. And I brought that to Scott, and he said, "Oh, we can do it." So?
So, what you have is, this is actually the, a resolution that authorizes us to move forward with the process. And it goes through the steps of then saying that I'm authorized to sign documents and do all that good stuff, which is still a little bit ways down the road. But the key, key facts in this are the Power and Light Fund is kind of obligated on the Minnet side. But Minnet loan in this case, that came through the Oregon Economic and Community Development Department, now known as Oregon Business Development Department, was a $4.745 million loan. And then, we also looked into a couple of other products, and the other one we could also refinance was a 2009 loan, which was done to put in the electric substation, the transmission line, and some of the metering. And that was $2.65 million. And when you get to where we are with the savings are, the, in the 2000 Minnet bond product, interest rate would go from 5.72 to 4.22, $404,000 in savings over time. So, very significant, $31,000 a year savings. On the 2009 Power and Light product, it was a 4.79% interest, a 2.84% interest, savings over time, 161,000, about $13,000 a year savings.
When's that last one paid off?
Oh.
You know, the first one's 41. Minnet's 41. Because this doesn't extend the length of the payoff.
No, no, no.
I was just wondering what the one on the bottom was.
I'll have to get back to an hour, I can't remember exactly.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. So, so with that, as we noted.
So, $34,000 a year in savings from what Minnet has to repay the city.
Thirty-one.
The second one's not 31.
No, 31,000.
31.
31 and 13.
The second one's, the second one's the Power and Light bonds.
Okay.
They're two separate products.
Got it.
We're packaging them, but they're actually separate products.
Okay, got it.
They're still separate.
And is, is there a cost for refinancing? I mean, are.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it's all built in.
That's built into the savings that you quoted?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the savings we have, they call it the all-in cost.
Got you.
It includes everything. And then, so the, we worked with the bond team on the process. We got our people selling, legal counsel in place. And what the bonds would do, what the resolution would do, authorize the sale of new bonds to be off the old bonds. That's the most direct part of it. Authorize the city officials negotiating, we'll be on specific terms. That'd be me or Mark, depending on who's around. And it is a full faith and credit to the city. So, instead of a revenue bond, this is once again, full faith and credit. So, frankly, any part of our city budget could pay these back if you chose to. So, with this, we're tracking pretty well in our process. Probably tail end of August, we'd actually be selling, and then all the paperwork could get tied up by October. And so, with this, we'd recommend approval. We talked about the financial implications, as noted before. If you had the couple options of not approving it, we obviously wouldn't move forward. If we had to delay, the way the interest rates are going, that's just, it's getting if-year and if-year, so.
If you were going to do a 2% spike way away.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hold off on that. There's, in this case, there's, I guess, even like more so in the Power and Light one, if you had it really popped there, it wouldn't even buy up one more.
Don't they give you like a 60-day grace period when you, when you fill out the paperwork? Don't you have like 60 days, it's kind of said at that, or is it the day you sell them? I mean, if they gave you a quote today, is that for 60 days, 30 days, no days?
Oh, everything's just an estimate right now.
It is, okay. It's the day you sell.
The day we sell, so, and then what would happen is just like that case. If it, if it came in and that was the, we hit the bad day again, then I could very well say, "No."
Any other questions? Resolution 1804.
I move approval of Resolution 1804 authorizing the city of Monmouth to refinance outstanding loans for Minnet and Power and Light projects and providing related matters. Second.
I'll give that one to Royal. There's a tie. Phyllis?
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Very good. And the last item on the business agenda tonight is making, giving our chicken friends a little company in the form of a duck. So, Scott, anything to add to that?
Well, I guess there's an assumption that they're friends.
Well.
You could end up with a rumble or something.
Poultry wars.
Foul personnel.
Poultry situations.
So.
So, yes, this is, this would actually change our city code definition, that poultry would be not just chickens, as it is now, but chickens and ducks.
But still not roosters.
Not roosters. So, other regulations are all in place regarding size, number of, at a proper, you know, care of the animals and, or fowl, as it may be. You had your first reading, I'm going to do the second reading, so if this gets approved, then it would go in the normal process 30 days after signing, and then it would be in effect.
Any questions? Reading by title, an ordinance amending Monmouth City Code Section 6.05.045 relating to the maintaining of poultry in certain zones. And this will be ordinance 1359. Who wants it?
I will speak for the ducks.
Is that a motion?
That is.
Okay, Marshall is moving.
So moved.
I assume Marshall's moving approval.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.[1538.04] Phyllis?
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Okay, it shall be ducks. And that brings us to the end of the business agenda. Are there any council comments tonight?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of cover something that we didn't quite get in council comments at the last meeting, is I wanted to just put a big shout out for city staff, and they put a lot of hard work into the 4th of July event.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
There were, there were three city booths, the city booth, the senior booth, and the police department booth that were at the park on an extremely hot weekend, so their dedication to doing that is really appreciated. And also, several counselors showed up to participate in making sure those booths were manned as well, so just a shout out to that for the work they went into making a successful 4th of July event in Main Street Park this year.
Anyone else?
So I'd like to note that in addition to Cycle Oregon, two weeks ago, or two weekends ago, there was a ride put on by a bike shop in Rogue over at Rogan Independence, and they garnered about 200 people on one of the hotter days, not the hottest day we've had this year, but one of the hotter days. And in addition to that, Bike MS will be here August 1st, so it's sort of the summer of cycling. I was able to be at almost all Cycle Oregon and a portion of the Rogue ride. I won't be able to attend much of Bike MS, but I just want to encourage folks to make those connections with our cycling folks. And I also want to give a shout out, as it were, to Sean Urbine, who's just constantly busting his hump to get some events like this into both of our communities. And so, just a good example of independents really stepping up and seizing at least the cycling portion of economic growth in our two areas.
You know, I work one of the rest, or the, I guess, resting areas, rest stations with the Central Lions Club, and had a chance to interact with a lot of the riders. And many of those riders were under a fair amount of duress. They didn't have the casual stroll that you might have had. But, but to a person, they were really pleased with the reception that they had, the rides that were provided for them. And I suppose that it's sort of understood that Cycle Oregon will run a good show when they do it, so what they really tend to comment on are the receptions that they have in the communities that they go to. And it was, you know, sort of universally, we were universally applauded, both Monmouth and Independence, from those riders. So that's a good one, and certainly city staff from both cities does a marvelous job with that, because there's a lot of articulation that needs to go with that. So, good on you all and good on us. I would also note, just as I was reflecting on the action that we did, the actions that we took tonight, you know, I think each of those are reflective of examples of good government. I mean, we've got the refinancing of the bonds, that's fiscal responsibility. The amphitheater loan, that's, that's good use of public money. And then the poultry ordinance, you know, is a reflection and is a result of us and I, chief among them, listening to, you know, the interests of citizens and sort of coming to a different conclusion than I had initially relative to the duck piece. But, so anyway, I guess just, and I don't know, maybe we do this all the time, I doubt it, but it seemed like that tonight we really had three really nice examples of good, good government in spite of the leadership that we have.
Thanks, John.
Anyway, just my, just my, my comment, self-aggrandizing as it might be.
My counsel treats me so well.
Well, I think, we'll get into this later in the work session, hope on this Oregon cycle, because I, like I said, I just took it on my own, I just walked around for two hours Sunday morning and talked to all the happy people that had got up and were moving, you know, to go for the second day ride, and got a lot of input, and I just want to bring up some of that later on.
Right. Well, I think Marshall's trying to arrange for, from Cycle Oregon to come back to town and tell us.
I asked him to.
Yeah, it was prompted by Royal's conversation with Terracorp, and we're trying to get some key players in there to sit down and get some two-way feedback, you know, the stuff we need to hear as a city and stuff that they need to hear as our organization.
And one thing that was, I guess, maybe a little unfortunate, was there was a little bit of a lack of communication, because we had Cycle Oregon pointing north while the Apple Box Theater was two blocks away, trying to put on this summer play, and the first night they kind of got drowned out, but the second night Cycle Oregon heard their paint and tried to lower the volume a little bit so they could get their performance in. But that's one of those ones where, you know, every now and then, the communication could be a little bit better, and that was one I was sorry to hear about when I got the call, the panicked call on Saturday, so it sounds like they did a good job of reaching out to Cycle Oregon, and Cycle Oregon was very responsive and trying to help them get through that, so, you know, good guests to have. I was really pleased to hear how that worked out. Any other comments? We've heard from almost everybody. And with that, we have an Urban Renewal Agency meeting tonight. In addition to work session, I propose we go ahead and get the Urban Renewal Agency meeting done. And so, if I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting until after the Urban Renewal Agency, I would appreciate it.
Move adjourn.
Royal gets the motion in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. And with that, council meeting is temporarily adjourned, and we will turn to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And I will note that we have all the same people here that we had for the council meeting, except we're now mister instead of mayor and counselor. And our citizen comment time, I don't see any citizens that... Consent calendar consists of minutes from the Urban Renewal Agency meeting of June 16th. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes. Move approval of those minutes? In favor? I'm sorry, second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll turn to the business agenda, which is adopting the resolution authorizing taking the amphitheater loan that the city council has so kindly offered to the agency. Do you have anything to add to that, Scott?
Yeah, we should get everything in the record. So what this is, is it's support for the amphitheater project. It's actually housed in the Urban Renewal District, so it's actually where the project will be in the budget. The funding is $1.222 million total. $800,000 comes from Urban Renewal, $300,000 from cash, $500,000 would be the loan that we're talking about from the city, from the city's Power and Light Fund. And then Park SDC funds are being chipped in for the remainder. And so it's a good product for each side, both sides benefit, and we just need you to authorize the loan. It would be $500,000 at 2.54% interest, and payments will be made monthly, and your resolution would authorize the loan.
Authorize the borrowing?
For 10 years.
And I would note that this is Resolution Number 27 for the Urban Renewal Agency. And anyone who would like to move?
I move approval of Resolution 27 authorizing an agreement for a loan to the Urban Renewal Agency. Let's get that title, that motion doesn't read the title. Authorizing borrowing?
Ah, yeah. So if I could paraphrase Mr. Carey's motion, and John, tell me if this gets the spirit, you would move approval of Resolution 27 authorizing borrowing the money from the city of Monmouth for a contribution to the Main Street Amphitheater project?
Yes.
Was I correct?
Except friendly. Except the friendly.
Okay, and second, and Phyllis?
Mr. Milligan.
Aye.
Mr. Carey.
Aye.
Mr. Silvernagle.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
We'll build an amphitheater. And I assume, Scott, that we have been moving ahead on sort of the groundwork for that, and still targeting, getting going as soon as the summer music season is over. Very good. Any other urban renewal business that anyone would like to touch on?
Just to tag on to the amphitheater thing, just let Winnipeg know as soon as we're getting a date on when we need to be out of the greenhouse, plus.
Yeah, we actually did put the notice out, and our intent is to have the house moved in October.
Moved one way or another, either horizontally or vertically? Vertically, right.
It'd be one way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's the intent, to get everybody online. We haven't seen the whole construction scheduling for, so there could be an adjustment in that